If you'll please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. Reverend Hunt? Make sure that's on.
There we go. Well, let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for today, today is the day that you have made. We choose to rejoice and be glad in it. And God, we pray a special blessing on all of our graduates from Allen Park High School and Cabrini. We just pray that the decisions that they've made to enter into adulthood, that you just give your blessing on them. We pray for all of our veterans in our city. We pray a special blessing on them. And Lord, we thank you for our first responders, our police and our fire department. We pray that you protect them and their families. And God, we thank you for our city council. Give them wisdom and we just thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. And Mr. Mizzi, if you'll take the roll call, please.
All right, Madam Mayor. Councilman Wertzbocker.
Present.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilman Schlack.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilwoman Nick.
Here.
Treasurer Estimer.
Present.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
By Mr. Schlack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 13th?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wertzbocker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. We will begin this evening with a proclamation. Usually, the Prism Club is able to join us from the Allen Park High School, but unfortunately, this year, they are not. Proclamation is for the LGBTQ Pride Month of June 2025. Whereas the city of Allen Park supports the rights and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles, which includes that every person has been created equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law. And whereas the city of Allen Park's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ community are a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community. And whereas 56 years ago, on June 28, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn in New York City, a courageous group of citizens rose up against harassment and mistreatment, setting in motion a chain of events that would become known as the Stonewall Riots and the birth of the modern LGBTQ civil rights movement. And whereas while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital in order to end discrimination and prejudice. Now therefore, I, Gail B. McLeod, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month in the city of Allen Park and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality that members of the LGBTQ community face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. In witness whereof, I have errand to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this 27th day of May, 2025. Thank you. And Mr. Lloyd has the proclamation, which he will present to the Prism Group. And again, I'm very sorry they were unable to be here because over the years, they have proven themselves to be a wonderful group of individuals. Now, we will move on to the city treasurer. One of our favorite people.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, I'm going to talk taxes. Just a reminder that I'm currently working on those summer tax bills. They're going to arrive in your mailboxes right around July 1st. There's two programs that I wanted to highlight tonight. One of them, these forms for these programs that we offer can be found on the treasurer's page of the city website. So if you visit www.cityofallenpark.org, if you select Departments on the left-hand side and you scroll all the way down to the last department, that's the Treasurer Department, it's alphabetical. From there, on the left panel of my page, you'll scroll down to Tax Forms, and that's where you'll find the forms that I'm highlighting today. The first is the Summer Property Tax Deferrment Form. An owner of an eligible property may file a completed Summer Property Tax Deferrment Form. It's Form 471. Complete it and bring it into the treasurer's office or mail it in before September 15th to be eligible. The deferment forms must be completed and filed each year, so even if you filed it last year, there has to be a new one completed each year. An eligible property is a residential, real property that's the principal residence of the taxpayer seeking deferment of those summer taxes. A valid deferment permits summer property taxes to be paid on or before February 14th, which is the winter tax due date and the date that all taxes are due to the city, as we have to turn it over to the county on March 1st. But you can, you would be free of any penalty or interest charges if you've completed that form. There is a qualification that you need, so just review that information on the website as well or contact me at the treasurer's office if I'm not in. You can speak to Kristen, who's extremely knowledgeable with this. She's in the Finance Department. She's one of the clerks that works the window. Or you can ask for one of our assessing staff for assistance. They also will be the ones that help approve those forms. The next item I wanted to review, as the deadline is coming up, or at least our deadline's coming up, is the ACH program. For many of you, we don't have a lot of people, I don't think we have enough people to take advantage of this. It's basically like a direct deposit, but it's the safest way to do it. An ACH transfer is the electronic transfer or movement of money between banks and/or credit unions through the automated clearinghouse. That's what ACH stands for. It's basically, like I said, a very safe way to form this auto-payment for your taxes. Those forms are also on that treasurer's page under Forms on the city website. Once approved, you'll still receive the bill or the statement in the mail, but it will have automatic payment printed on it, so you know that that's going to be taken care of. We ask that these forms be turned into the treasurer's office no later than June 6th. However, you can return them up till about August 1st, but the earlier, the better for us, please. Those ACHs, we withdraw on or about August 15th as well. So as soon as that due date is set, that's when we schedule them to hit your bank account that day, to draw that day. Lastly, a reminder from our assessing team. It's important to file your PTA, which is the Property Transfer Affidavit, or PRE, the Principal Residence Exemption Forms, promptly after a transfer of ownership. If anyone in the audience has any questions about any of these items, I'll make myself available after the meeting as always. If anyone at home listening to this has questions, please contact the treasurer's office, ask for myself. My contact information is on the website as well. Or contact, like I said, Kristen for assistance. Kristen works 8:30 to 4:30 Tuesday, Thursdays, and Fridays, and she can be reached at 313-928-4464. She helped compile some of this information for me. She's very knowledgeable. So, thank you, Kristen, and thank you, everybody. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment because that ACH program is near and dear to my heart. And just so everyone knows, you get well in advance your property tax statement, which tells you exactly what's going to be taken out of your checking account and tells you the date on which it's going to be withdrawn. So you don't need to worry about checking lost in the mail or whether or not. You can make it up to City Hall and it's nice and painless and I highly recommend it. Are there any questions of the treasurer? If not, we'll move on to the city administrator's report.
Good evening. Savon Cement will start doing street sectional work on Cortland Avenue first week of June. Work continues on Manor Avenue with the reconstruction of the underground and forums. And once this is complete, they will step four in concrete sometime next week. Six alleys have been paved recently downtown and 13 more will be done by fall, thanks to our DDA. The Dog Park Committee met recently and the department heads are currently working on getting quotes from contractors to hopefully start this project after July. The library's book bike has arrived. Look for it at city events like the DDA's Farmers Market, Parks and Recreation's Lemonade and the Shade. The much-needed new cloud-based BSNA system will be starting demos with department heads in June. This is an integral part of city operations in many of our departments. The library's summer hours begin today. They will open Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. They will be closed on the weekends until after Labor Day. With help from the Festivities Commission, the renovation of Millard Park is also complete. Thank you.
Yeah, excuse me. You have allergies. May I have a motion to accept and file the city administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wertzbocker, seconded by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We now come to the public hearing portion of today's agenda, and this is because of a petition that was filed regarding proposed restrictions on new gas station developments, moratorium for gas and service stations. So we will now open the public hearing. Just so everyone is aware during this session, you are limited to speaking for five minutes. We would like you to provide your name and the street on which you live, but do not give us your full address. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Solomon Adas, Southfield and Eller Road. Actually, this moratorium is just for, for the city to take a breath and think what the citizen wants for the Allen Park master plan. So what is the benefit for the city? What is the duty for the city council toward the homeowner, business owners? Why, why the city officials really are so biased to Sheetz? The whole idea of actually having a breath because Sheetz is coming on the corner of Southfield and Eller Road. Why did the city planner recommended approval for variances, three variances, which is 500 feet from a gas station to a gas station? 80 limitations, 40,000 gallons, they wanted to be approved for 80,000 gallons. Why did, why he even recommended approval for all the variances to Sheetz's proposal before even it's heard by the Board of Appeal? So the, the officials, he's recommending to actually approve all of those variances? The city has rules and ordinance. Why does the city have ordinance and rules? I thought to protect residents, businesses. Why now the city want to break all these rules for Sheetz? Last time when Sheetz applied for their applications, they really tried to kind of, it's really, it's a laughing matter. They tried to bribe the city by saying, oh, we're going to put a sign that says, "Welcome to Allen Park." I could put one like that. It's not a big deal. They said, well, we donate to a lot of several charities. What about the homeowners next to it? What about the existing businesses? The other worst thing is putting in 80,000 gallon. I have 16,000 gallons. My Marathon on Southfield, 16,000. 80,000, that's six times more. Gas emit vape. That's mean building six gas stations like my size emitting vape into the atmosphere. Now, in that corner, there's already two gas station and there's so many on Southfield. That's mean you can have a cluster of gas station in that intersections. I know the, I looked at the city master plan. They're calling for, they're encouraging retails, sport activities, farmers markets, medical buildings, but not 24 hours. Drive-through liquor. There's had 24 hours liquor. I know all the residents and homeowners, they're all against it. Probably, I would say, over 95% of the people I've been talking to, they're all against it. So I'm not sure why all of the residents against it and city officials, they're really kind of, you know, rolling the red carpet for Sheetz. So please, keep the city of Allen Park family-oriented, quiet. It's, they call it the jewel of the Dow River. So keep it that way. Don't bring 24 hours liquor, bringing all kind of people to our beautiful city. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Michael Stark. Thank you for having me here tonight. I live on Philomene Boulevard, directly behind the old Rite Aid. And I agree with the gentleman previously. My biggest question is, why does the city of Allen Park need a Sheetz at that point? We have two gas stations literally across the street, two more to the left, two more down to the right. I fail to see, unless this is bringing in huge, you know, tax revenue, I'd like to know what that revenue would be. Because personally speaking, for my residence, I've done a lot to my house to update it. I'm hoping the value has gone up. I think a 24-hour gas station directly in my backyard is only going to make my home values go down. I see no reason, I don't know what this gas station will bring Allen Park. We can get gas station anywhere close. We can get fast food anywhere close. It would seem like it would be better if we can't find anyone to move in that area to raise it and just have a nice green area in Allen Park. I just, I'm failing to see the positives about having a Sheetz on that corner. We don't need any more gas station. We don't need any more fast food. It's 24 hour, no matter what, at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, this is going to bother me in the middle of night. I, I just, I don't see the positives to having a Sheetz there. It's huge. It's 24 hours. It's going to be loud. I don't see a positive that Sheetz brings to Allen Park. So thank you very much for your time.
Just, hey, good evening. So tonight, what this public hearing is about, there was a request to do a moratorium on gas stations within the city for five years. That is what tonight is about. As to the development these gentlemen were talking about, that is still in the planning stage. So while your comments are well taken, that is not what the public hearing is tonight. So, that's why I wanted to make you aware of that. There, there will be Planning Commission meetings and other public forums with respect to that. So I just want to make people aware of that.
Can you refresh remember exactly what are we discussing tonight? What's the point?
So, there was a request for a, what's called a moratorium. I don't know if you signed a petition, which, which said, they were asking that the city would do a blanket rule saying there's, there cannot be any gas stations for the next five years in the city. That is the issue that is before that. Some people wanted a public hearing on that issue. So that is what this is about.
Can I add this one? The reason why the moratorium was actually because of the Sheetz. And actually, at the time, you could actually decide the time.
Sir, sir.
Yeah, you, you had your.
Had your time to comment. Our attorney is just trying to explain what the purpose, this is not a public hearing about Sheetz. That has not come to us. It has not passed through the Planning Commission. That is still in the planning stages. This is simply about a moratorium for any, if someone else wanted to come in and take a vacant property and build another gas station, we're not focusing on Sheetz or anyone else. This is simply a generic moratorium that was requested.
Great. Thank you for the clarity on that. I appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity to, for me to speak today. So I wanted to give a little bit of, oh, sorry, Monica Bailey, Philomene. So I wanted to give a little bit of context on what's going on. I think there's a lot of confusion. So the planning commi, so Sheetz had pre-application meetings with Sheetz a while ago. There was a Planning Commission meeting on the moratorium that came up for a five-year proposal for a moratorium, which essentially freezes gas stations. This was presented to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission has the ability to modify it. They can shorten it, they can do whatever they may be, depending on the risks and the needs of the moratorium. So some risks, some reasons other cities have enacted moratoriums, which I think are very related to Allen Park, is the oversaturation of, one, number one, is like the oversaturation of gas stations. So when the Planning Commission reviewed the moratorium proposal, the city planner presented data on what is the gas station saturation for other cities. One thing that was not considered in that was the factual oversaturation of that desired area for Sheetz. And that was because at the time, Sheetz had not applied, so it was disregarded. Fast forward, Sheetz has applied. We know where Sheetz wants to be. The data that still hasn't been considered is the factual oversaturation in that desired area. So this data, the city ha, the city planner has, you can go to the city planner packet from the March meeting and you'll see the five cities, six cities that say they're, and I can email it to y'all as well. It says there, how many gas stations they have per square mile. If we have another gas station in the proposed location that Sheetz has applied, put all facts in front of us. Let's not ignore part of them. Let's look at everything. We are factually oversaturated as is when you're looking at the big picture, okay? So, so yes, what happened in the Planning Commission, it was rejected, but there was no consideration for the factual oversaturation of the gas stations in that area. There was also no consideration for the proposal that there's two gas stations directly across the street because at the time, Sheetz had not applied. So that is one of the reasons I think the city should absolutely consider a moratorium. Y'all can adapt it, right? Five years is excessive, in my personal opinion, that's, you know? But you can tailor, depending on the facts and circumstances. We do not have, our city pla, our city master plan has not been finalized. It's currently in the process. That is another reason other cities have enacted a gas station moratorium, to pause, to reflect on the risks that happen with gas stations. So I encourage you to consider that as well. There's a handful of cities in Michigan alone that have, they have moratoriums or risks on gas stations, Romulus, Pontiac, Wesleyan, Farmington Hills, Grand Blanc, and Detroit. None of this was presented during the Planning Commission meeting, when it was rejected. Also, in the Planning Commission meeting, when it was rejected, there was, I think, two things, two data points. The first data point was an article that said it's really difficult to pass gas station moratoriums. However, there was no data presenting the vast majority, the vast amount of cities who have passed it. So some reasons, market saturation, high concentration of gas stations, environmental impact, aligning for, considering future developments of our potent, our downtown area, right? It is zoned as downtown in our city master plan. So I have three reasons I think we should pass a moratorium. Y'all can tailor how you, how you feel fit, whether it's the time duration, whether it's a specific location. Allen Park in general is not factually oversaturated with gas stations. This is true. That proposed area is factually oversaturated with gas stations. There's a lot of other data I can also share with you at a later time of, the gas stations Allen Park does have, we have 15 gas stations, only, I don't, this, don't quote me on this, I think eight are not next to a residential, any residences. Seven are next to one or a, or Kitty Corner. So this is, would set a huge precedent by having a gas station in this area next to multiple locations. Another data point that was also not presented in the Planning Commission meeting was the nature of gas stations that have greater than 40,000 capacity. I want this on record. It is big box realtors in industrial areas as well as truck stops. If you go to the Planning Commission data packet, truck stops was not selected as presented in the packet. So I think that's very relative. So three reasons I think y'all should accept a moratorium is the fact that other cities, benchmark other cities, look at what they're doing. You know, look at the risks that we have in Allen Park for that proposed area, and it supports that we need to take a step back, consider the risks, and have a moratorium, as well as the fact that it's statistically oversaturated in that area and the fact that we're updating our master plan. So thank you for the consideration.
My name's Donnie Broome. I live on Jane. So I hear all these, I hear about this gas station. I live right across the street, and guess what? People say, how would you like it if there's a gas station built next to you? Well, there is. There's a gas station, then you guys developed a Caribou Coffee next to me. Completely fine with it. I can tell you right now, I'm happy that we have businesses open, all right? I'm happy the lights are on. And I feel a moratorium, that kind of scares off other businesses. And so a moratorium on gas stations now, do we want a moratorium on butcher shops? Do we want a moratorium? You know, I just think it's a slippery slope, number one, and for the argument of, well, you wouldn't like it next door to you, or it's next door to me. It doesn't bother me. 24 hours, there's very few things that are open 24 hours nowadays. So the opportunity to give a job to somebody who might not be able to drive or something, the opportunity to be able to go and get something if I work midnights, you know? I run a crematory. I work all throughout the night. So to be able to come home and have something on my way, I think that's great. Jobs, I think, are great, okay? There's a dilapid, there's a decaying strip mall right there. You would rather have that empty building and you pull all these case studies out, whatever, whatever. Again, Allen Park itself is not oversaturated. So in opposition to what a lot of people here are saying, I'm against this moratorium, point blank, period.
Hi, Megan Loving, I'm white. I'm about two blocks from where the Rite Aid was. I spoke also at the Planning Commission. I was kind of caught off guard. I just showed up because I didn't know much about even the location of it. So speaking to the moratorium, again, as was kind of addressed previously, at the commission meeting, they were looking at other cities, like is Allen Park overall saturated compared to other cities? It sounded like maybe not. But in this area, so I Googled it from my house, how many gas stations are within a mile from my house? That seems like a fair walking distance, even for me. I can list them all out for you if you like, but within a mile of my house, there are 16 gas stations. Do I need 16 gas stations within a mi, like, I have never waited in line at gas stations. We do not need any more gas stations. If you bump that out to a mile and a half from my house, you can add another 10 to that. That's 26 gas stations within a mile and a half of my house. We, Allen Park does not need to become gas station central. And a big takeaway I got from the commission meeting that I didn't realize was that, once a property becomes a gas station, it's very hard for it to be anything other than a gas station. So if a gas station is developed in this area, it will always be a gas station. If this gas station runs out the existing gas stations, those are just going to be dilapidated properties. 16 of them, around, within a mile of my house. So that's just something to consider. I've lived here since I was five. I love Allen Park. Of my six siblings, three of us still live here. This is just not the vision that we want for Allen Park. We can do with other businesses. Yes, I don't want to see an empty building there, but a gas station is just not the direction for Allen Park. So please take that into consideration. 16 gas stations, okay?
Hi, my name is Mohamed Rustam. I own the Circle K right here, next to the city. I think, I think they're not, they should put a pause on the gas station. The reason why, because as soon as you start allowing these companies to come in and buy these gas stations, you can have like come and go. There's another company called SNK. I don't know if you guys look it up, and they're already trying to buy some station in Allen Park. So why don't they just buy the existing store and they can convert to Sheetz, they can convert to whatever they want to, like Chesterfield, that's where I got a station over there in New Baltimore. New Baltimore. I own like six stations, and so what the Sheets over there, they did, they couldn't get approved, so they bought an existing gas station, they tear down, they build a new one. So they can do the same thing, the problem is on this one is Allen Park, you can have too many gas stations. So if there are other gas stations, big box stores open up, there's some gas is going to go out of business. So when you're going to see on Southfield, you're going to get off on Southfield, see Allen Park, like two or three gas stations go out of business and sit in there, it's going to cost millions of dollars to remove the tanks, remove the contaminant soil, and to build something else there, so it's going to be very, very hard. And that's what happened, City of Detroit, they kept approving and approving gas stations, so what happened is I got a station on Davidson, there's a bunch of stations are shutting down right now. So city don't know what to do, they confused. So they don't know because those, to remove the tanks, it costs like about two, three million dollars. So if somebody comes, like Starbucks, somebody wants to buy the property, it's going to cost them eight, nine, ten million dollars to clean it up and put something there. So the people get scared, like when they see a gas station property, they don't want to buy it, so if it's closed. And that's what the New Baltimore is doing right now, the Canton, same thing, like, there's one of my friend tried to build a gas station on 275 Michigan Avenue. You know what the Canton city told them? Hey, listen, why don't you just go buy existing gas station, whoever wants to sell it, pay top dollar, whatever, tear down, build a new one. So SNK is from New York, they own, on Chicago, they're trying to buy a station right on Allen Road, the BP, and they're trying to buy one on Allen Road on Southfield, there's a little Sonoco, and then they were trying to buy this, Southfield and Ninety-four Amoco. So they've been bidding on it, and because they want to come in to the city. So if you let these companies come in, you're going to have come and go, you're going to have pal, you're going to have so many, like, that's what Romulus, they put a pause on, there's like five application pending right now. So you're going to have so many applications come in, and then what's going to happen is it's going to be a gas station of town. So Southfield, like, when you get off, like, you want to give it like a nice vibe, city, like, you have every corner a gas station, it's not going to, I own a gas station, I love competition, but it's not going to be good for the city, I can tell you that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Claire McNally Bailey, I've been up here before, and I'm just letting you know that the Allen Park residents are totally confused on what's going on now. First off, on March third, we got a note on the door saying there's going to be a text amendment change of gas station gallons, and we didn't know what it was, so all these people that got these mess, these bulletins on their front door, came to the planning commission, and then they tabled it, which was the right thing to do. The next thing we heard was that it was going to go to the zoning board, and there was three variances that they wanted. Well, reading the paperwork, they were, the city planner was requesting that they accept these variances as-is. We're asking that the city, well, we'd like to know, who's working on the master plan? When are we going to have more ideas? I know you're doing a survey, you know, we're trying to figure out what's going to go on in the city square, that could be a really good place to watch the sunsets, because it's a great view for the sunsets, and we want to know what's going on there, and we have a lot of people in town that own businesses that are very worried. And one of the reasons why we're worried is because the development coming through here that they want will be a huge driveway going in and out of Park Avenue, that's the Park Avenue Business District. Right now, it's a quiet area, it won't be when it's a twenty-four-hour drive-through. So we would like to have clarification on more of this stuff, and we would like to have you guys take a moratorium, at least a year, Romulus did a year, so that you guys could get your city plan design, figure out what we're going to do, because I know you guys want to do multiple units, housing units over by Enterprise Drive, but nobody has any idea what we're going to do with the Allen Park theater park, the property. I know we're starting the farm market, but we need to do some more action and get people downtown and not afraid of the traffic. Thank you.
Is this public comment designated just for the issue about the gas-
Right now, this is public hearing on the moratorium. This is the public hearing on the moratorium, this is not, for people to come up and make comments, and that's all it is. If there's no further individuals coming up, we will close the public hearing. Coming up for the public hearings, sir, or public comments?
Comments on the public hearing.
No, this is the public hearing on the moratorium.
Correct.
All right.
Mark Bailey, Philomen Street, so, business owner, resident of Philomen for many decades. Your moratorium should be approved for five years. Give us time to think about things, do not jump into a gas station for five years, I would suggest you say seven or eight years. But let's start with five years, and I think everybody, the majority of the citizens that I've communicated with in this city are against a new gas station at that particular location. And a moratorium would prohibit having a gas station at that location and other locations in Allen Park, but we're focusing on that corner of, the center of Allen Park is on Allen and Park. Do we want to be known as another gas station at the center of Allen Park, at the intersection of Allen and Park? Put a pause on it for five years, other things can be done there. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Jane Kittel, Hamford Street. In Googling how much it costs to remove a tank from a dead gas station, it's between fifteen and twenty thousand, not two to three million. Also, on your moratorium, I advise you to take care, we already have rulings on the books, on gas stations, we don't need further rulings, that's what mostly a moratorium is. If you open up this can of worms, we have approximately forty-seven salons in the city, you're going to have salon owners up here next, staying, they want moratoriums, they don't want any more salons open. We have on Southfield, in a one-mile stretch, you have five coffee shops on the same side, you're going to have them coming up, not wanting, wanting moratoriums. Take care on what you do, you open up a can of worms, this is just in a planning stage, it doesn't mean you can't come back and revisit it, a five-year moratorium is insane. To me, you're opening yourself up to another lawsuit if you do something like that, because you look like you're prejudiced against the Sheets coming in then, or another gas station coming in then. We can't afford another lawsuit.
There's no other individuals coming up, we will close the public hearing, and based on recommendation of the planning commission in March, I believe, would any council member like to make a motion?
Mayor, may I, through chair, may I say a few things?
Yes.
So, you know, as, as we heard the comments from citizens, all of us are sympathetic to the concerns of all of you. In fact, all of us live here in the city, we're all concerned, and Mayor and Council, if you want to vote on this matter, you can, but if you do, I need to recommend that you vote against the request for an amendment to the zoning ordinance which would result in a moratorium on the development of new gas stations. The city has laws in place to regulate the development of gas stations, there's no emergency as the law defines an emergency. Our planning commission has determined a moratorium is not warranted. Probably most importantly is, in order to properly adopt a moratorium, the city must specifically state the reasons for adopting the moratorium, and in this instance, there are not legally sufficient reasons for adopting the moratorium. So I leave it to you, Council, as to what you want to do, want to take any action on this.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion upon the advice of our council to affirm the planning commission's decision in denying the moratorium.
I have a second. I have a motion by Mr. Lloyd, and a second by Mr. Valerius, to affirm the planning commission's recommendation to deny the moratorium.
If I could, yes, ma'am.
You know, I, if I could, I know it's a little bit out of order, like I said earlier, this, this is, this only has to do with the moratorium, and there is, the rest of any development in the city require, goes through the planning commission.
If I could, Mayor?
Yes.
So I, again, I just want to state this, I think, especially to the people that have been following this issue from the beginning, you've seen me at all the meetings, I'm at this one, and the planning commission, and I've, and I've spoken to many of you guys, outside of this meeting, I've spoken to people in the streets, and I, my, my feeling on this moratorium is, is all the issues that we're, we're looking at, we, we have the legal framework, we have the ordinances in place that we can address the concerns of everybody here. My biggest concern as a, as a council person, is that if we, again, doing a blanket moratorium, I think that Ms. Bailey brought it up, as well as Ms. Loving, about that particular area being saturated, but when we're talking about a moratorium, like, we're talking about the entire city, and if we were to be talking a specific business, then we would definitely be looking at something that we would have to go to court to defend. And that seems like an unnecessary use of taxpayer dollars when there is other non-legal ways of addressing it. We already have the system in place. And again, I would encourage people, and this definitely goes against my own interest and my own time, but I would encourage you all, we have the planning commission coming up, it's going to be next Thursday, there's ZBA meetings that are going to be coming up, and anything eventually will end up at this body. So we are still very much in this process, there will be many meetings between now and then about that particular development, but when it comes to this moratorium, this very specific thing, I wholeheartedly feel that this is not in the best interest of the city to pursue.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council?
Question? A yes vote means what? To affirm?
That we accept the planning commission's recommendations to deny the moratorium.
To deny?
Deny.
Okay. It's one of those backward, forward-
Yeah, right. Very good question.
I will, traditionally, the way we refer things when a commission sets, sends it, is concur with the planning commission's recommendation, and so forth.
Thank you for that.
I'm, as the motion maker, I'm okay with that wording.
Mr. Valerius?
Yeah.
So we're clear on that? We will be voting on concurring with the planning commission's recommendation to deny the moratorium. Call for a vote, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Now we come to the public comments section of tonight's meeting, where the public may come up and address council. Time limit is five minutes, all we ask, again, is that you provide your name and the street on which you live, please do not provide the full address.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Shelley Segwin, I live on Helen Street, and on April 2nd, we had a terrible storm, and the people on my street all experienced flooding in our basements because of a water main break. I came here on April 7th, I talked to somebody, Deb, from the mayor's office, and she called someone, and they sent someone from the city out to assess the situation, this gentleman's name was Eric, and he told me that the reason why we had the flood was because when they had been working on the water main previously, some of their equipment had broken the, the water main, I'm sorry, I don't know the language for all of this or exactly, but he, they cracked it, and that's what led to us experiencing all this flooding. Now, I bought this house in 2015, I've never had any water in my basement whatsoever, and so anyway, when he told me this, I said, "Oh, well, I, I would assume then the city would help us with all the damage," he's like, "Well, they're going to have to." Well, I, and I did receive a letter from the city administrator's office, Mr. Murray, and it just kind of outlined the process and the criteria that is, applies in the situation under which the city would then be responsible. And, so, everybody on my street, the ones closer to the water main, experienced even more water than I did, I was kind of more towards the tail end, and I got about two to three inches, I had to hire, you know, a flood company to come out, pull the water out, I've had tons of damage, my homeowner's insurance, I, I never had any water, so I only carried five thousand dollars on my policy, they waived the deductible because they said the damage well exceeds the five thousand dollars. And I, so the city is saying, no, they're not responsible, okay? And the five criteria apparently are checked, there's four of them that the city can say, yes, we are responsible, based on four of the criteria. The fifth criteria, which apparently is the, the issue and how the city can not help the citizens out who experienced this, is the defect was not remedied by the governmental agency in a reasonable time. And, and, so they did have a crew out, right when the storm was happening, it was fixed, but the damage was done then. You know, my, I, I had to throw away about fifty percent of the contents in my basement, I'm still dealing with it, I had plumbers out again today, I've incurred thousands of dollars of expenses already, and I still don't have a restoration company, I still need to hire a restoration company to come out, I got to get rid of all my carpet, the walls, I mean, this has been devastating and extremely stressful. And so, my hope is that city council can maybe apply some influence over the risk management people and do the right thing. You know, Mr. Lloyd just mentioned about, you know, we should try to find non-legal ways to save the taxpayers' money, and, you know, I would hope that that would make sense in this situation, too. Like, it's clear that the city had, they're recognizing, acknowledging, yes, we broke the pipe, that's what caused it, but now saying, but we, we're not legally responsible, we don't have to help you out in this situation. I've had to take out two personal loans, I'm also applying for a hardship loan against my retirement account, that's even with the five thousand dollars I got from my homeowner's insurance. And so, I'm just asking the, the city to do the right thing, rather than have this go to litigation, which apparently, according to my neighbors, about six years ago, there was a class action lawsuit against the city about flooding, and I wasn't included in that because I didn't have any damages. And they all were paid, you know, I, I forget the amount, I don't know if it was all the same, or if they got different amounts, but regardless, it seems very kind of inefficient, and- kind of inefficient and, um, it's, it just doesn't seem right to have to involve attorneys to settle this when the city is recognizing that indeed it was the crack in the pipe that caused this. And so, um, yeah, I'm just asking city council to help the city do the right thing and to respond to us, because this has been incredibly stressful and it's still no end in sight. You know, I still have, I, I don't even know how much money I'm gonna have to spend to get the basement back to where it should be. So, that's all. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Jane Kittle, Hanford Street. I know this isn't Q and A, but I'm just gonna throw them out there, maybe get the answer later. Um, I caught we're doing a dog park. I remember us getting a committee together to discuss it and come up with so forth, but I don't ever remember it coming before you guys to approve it.
It hasn't come before. It'll come before when we go to get the quotes approved and bid off such, but we've had a facilities committee, which...
No, 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 I know, I know you had a committee. I was just, I, I was, yeah. Okay, no, I understood that. Okay, our city is $78 million in debt, $100,000, $130,000 for a dog park, is that really something we need to be spending money on that perhaps it could go towards the debt? I know it sounds like a drop in the bucket, but if you don't keep putting money towards it, you're never gonna get it down. And my last question is, is, I understand, I could be wrong, that property over there is part Melvinell, part Allen Park?
It's owned all by Allen Park.
The whole section?
Owned by Allen Park, some jurisdiction is in city limits of Melvinell.
So is the dog park gonna be in the jurisdiction of, it's gonna be a split dog park?
It's not their property, it's in their city.
But aren't you under their rule, then? Like, if you opened a business here, you're under the city's rules here?
To a point, but we've already went in front of them for that property.
Okay.
Everything included, and they passed that several years ago.
Okay. Okay, that's nice. Thanks.
Hi, Monica Bailey, Philomene. So first, uh, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the transparency on, like, what are the factors that are influencing your decision on the gas station moratorium? It's super helpful for the residents to know why, so I appreciate that. Um, and the other thing I wanted to say is that, um, like, I think it's been acknowledged that there is a lot of confusion, so if you, if, you know, whatever the city can do to try to provide more context on this stuff is really helpful. Um, as, as well as upcoming meetings that are specifically on sheets, I mean, the moratorium is related to sheets, um, but, so people actually know, so that would be maybe a suggestion. Um, I did want to give a little bit, uh, also, maybe a bit of concern with the discussions and the information that's provided in the planning commission. Essentially, um, there is not the full, my, my limited, you know, interpretation of the information is that the data that's presented in the agenda packet is not the full, uh, suite of data that the city has that is relative to the decisions. Um, I just want to share some specific examples. Um, so my ask is for you as, you know, elected officials to try to make sure there's transparency and we're getting all the factors, um, especially when the city has them, right? Uh, rather than having, you know, it's, yeah, just, um, transparency, accountability, and independence, right? Uh, it's really important that the decision makers have all of the data. Um, so some examples that I mentioned as well briefly, so in the March Planning Commission meeting, um, the two topics were for the moratorium that was requested, as well as the fact that there was a request to change the zoning, zoning ordinance to remove the 20, uh, 40,000 gallon capacity limit. Um, there was no indication in the packet who that was coming from, why the city, uh, wanted to just remove a ordinance of 40,000 gallon capacity that all of, you know, the other gas stations had to abide by. Um, so in the data packet, it presented that the average gas stations that have greater than 40,000, it's big box realtors that's presented, uh, I think it was Costco, Meyer, Sam's Club, maybe one other one that I'm forgetting. Like I mentioned earlier, the data that was deliberately excluded, omitted, was the fact that there was also two truck stops, that was Pilot and Trucks Loves, Loves Travels, Travel Stop. I think that's relative, um, to the facts and considerations. Now, if you fast forward to the ZBA meeting, um, there is a zoning, there was a zoning ordinance request for greater than 40,000, Sheetz won 78,000. Um, the facts on the gas stations that have that, that are in commercial areas, was also not presented. Um, so that, I, concern is that there's not transparency with all the facts and circumstances for the decision makers to be able to make an informed decision, uh, as well as another data set that was, um, the, the market saturation that I mentioned earlier. In the, uh, the planning commission packet for May on the Sheetz proposal, there was no data on the saturation, there was no data on the over, uh, the gas stations that have greater than 40,000. And sorry, when I say planning commission, this was also, this was the facts with the planning commission agenda, this was also the facts with the ZBA agenda. Um, so my ask, again, is please just make sure you're getting all the facts to make an informed decision, uh, yourselves, as well as the planning commission, so that there's downstream accountability. Uh, the planning commission meetings are not televised, um, there's a lot of confusion, the public doesn't really know what's going on, this is. Um, so also a good opportunity, I guess, for residents to, um, you know, if they have any asks as well. So, that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's no one else coming forward? We will close the public comments and move on to tonight's consent agenda, which tonight consists of purchasing actions of claims and accounts in the payroll report, and a license and permit requested by Angelica Lutheran Church, uh, to hold a car show on Saturday, May 31st, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM with the fee waived. May I have a motion, please? Motion. Motion by Ms. Nick. Second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll now move on to resolutions. The first resolution this evening is to authorize the mayor to sign the CDBG subrecipient agreements and certifications on behalf of the city of Allen Park for ADA curb repair and senior services. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wertzbocker. Second by?
Second.
Mr. Valerius. I want to, uh, explain what we are approving.
So these are grants that are offered through the HUD program, through Wayne County CDBG. We've, were awarded or granted, yeah, something, $105,000 for curb slash intersection repairs and for our senior services of $20,000. To have that agreement, we have to have the mayor, who's the executive of the city, have a resolution for her to sign those agreements. That's how it's done with most all grants, federal, state, or county.
As long as they don't come after me for the line.
Oh, they will.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Resolution two is to approve the request from Inner City Baptist Church for their annual fireworks display on June 22nd at 9:15 PM with final approval from the fire chief. May I have a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Schleck. Any comments or questions? Believe this is a, um, annual event and, um, enjoyed by many, and, uh, all are welcome. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Thank you. Third resolution is to approve the DDA's request to close Allen Road on Wednesday, June 18th, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM for their annual car show. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr.? Schleck. Wait a minute, I have a G over here. And, and seconded by Mr. Barr. Any comments or questions? Again, annual event, maybe my last one? For my vehicle, getting to cause me some problems. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Resolution four is to approve the DDA's request to close Allen Road on Friday, September 12th, from 7:00 AM until Sunday, September 14th at 7:00 AM for the annual Made in Michigan Festival. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr?
Yes, I'm on the opposite side.
Second by Mr. Wertzbocker. Any comments or questions? Again, another annual event that seems to be going very well. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Resolution five is to request the city clerk to apply for the beer and wine license through the state of Michigan for the DDA Made in Michigan Festival, September 12th and 13th. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution is approved. Resolution six, to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefit through the state of Michigan contract and Macomb County contract to purchase two patrol vehicles priced at $50,865 each, and one detective bureau administrative vehicle priced at $45,155 from Lunghammer Ford with funds from the police capital budget. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wertzbocker. Anyone want to elaborate on this, please?
Yes, Mayor, Chief Phelps. We've been on a s- the police department's been on a steady flow to replace our old aging vehicles and per our CBA, um, this is just two, the last pieces we have. Per the contract, once they hit a certain mileage, we must replace them. The two patrol vehicles are replacing two vehicles that'll be over mileage. The one administration vehicle is a 2009 vehicle that is aged, parts are, it's starting to rust. Um, the mileage, I actually don't have a number on that, it's just becoming a high-maintenance vehicle, it's barely, barely driven because of, uh, the problems it has. So those are the three vehicles we need to keep the fleet in maintenance and working order.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from council?
I have one for the, uh, Mayor. The vehicles that, uh, are no longer gonna be in service, are those auctioned off or...
They are auctioned off. Um, DPS Roy handles that, I don't know exactly, you know, the process, but we do auction them.
Then does that money come back into your department?
Um, I imagine it goes to a general fund. If we use forfeiture money, it has to go to that fund, which we didn't in turn repurchase vehicles at a later time. If it is regular money we use, then it goes back to the general fund. Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Learn something every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll buy some vehicles. Resolution seven is to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefit to purchase a mini dump truck from Lunghammer Ford through the state of Michigan Cooperative Purchasing Contract at a cost of $56,939. Pricing for chassis upfitting by Truck and Trailer Specialties is provided by the city of Rochester Hills Extendable Purchasing Agreement totaling $37,685 with funds from account 59254598800. I have a motion, please. Motion. Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. And we will elaborate on this.
Good evening. Uh, this item in the 2526 Capital Improvement Plan, this item is listed as a vehicle for the sewer department. Uh, we also use it for snow plowing, but given the long lead times, uh, we are requesting that we get approval sooner so that we can get this in the hands of the, the, um, upfitter and the chassis provider, and hopefully cut down on the lead time to take delivery on this vehicle.
Council, have any comments or questions?
I do. What is a mini dump truck?
Good question, uh, that's, sound, just like it sounds, um, you know, we have our large, I don't know how many cubic yard dump trucks that you think of when you think of a DPS, um, dump truck. This is considerably smaller, about five to six cubic yards if I'm not mistaken. So it's just a smaller capacity, but it allows us, particularly in the sewer and water department, to use it for, um, hauling spoils, bringing materials out. And then, being that it's a dump truck, it has a tip, uh, bed on it so that we can also use it for salting and things like that. Just smaller.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a mini dump truck. Resolution eight is to authorize the Allen Park Public Library to purchase five study rooms and one small meeting room in the amount of $85,603.87. The purchase will be through Castell, a workplace design and office furniture dealer, using the Sourcewell contract with funds from account 27100098500. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Uh, have somebody from the library who'll come up and tell us what we're doing there.
Good evening, council.
Thank you for you.
Can you hear me? Okay. As you all are aware, um, we have, uh, a space issue in the library. Um, we are trying to fill a need that the community has let us know that they have. Um, they need more places to meet, um, and we do not have that kind of space. We have tables, but we don't have private space. Um, this will allow us to have, uh, like the mayor said, four, uh, two-person study rooms, one four-person study room, and a small meeting room, um, that will be, uh, built, so that we can have concurrent programs.
Any comments or questions from council?
So will these rooms allow people to tutor in there?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Barr?
It's my, it's, it's my commission board. I agree with, uh, what she says. It's needed. Um, I believe it also includes a little bit of, uh, duct work into the...
There will not need to be any, uh, duct work. Uh, the, the meeting rooms, uh, don't have ceilings, um, and that prevents us from needing to have any kind of HVAC units in there. Um, there will be some sound barriers that they hang from the ceiling to make sure that, uh, the rooms remain somewhat private, um, but they are all made of glass. Um, and again, this is in our budget for next fiscal year, um, but we are hoping to have this done in late August, so we are hoping to, to contact the company and have this set up. Um, it is our hope to have this established, um, by next school year, so that teachers and students can utilize it.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We're going to make, uh, some very good use of some space there. And now we will come to elected official comments, and this evening we will start with Mr. Astimer.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. God bless you and good night.
Mr. Mizzi? I don't think we were ready for that.
I've been saying that for like, almost twenty years.
Thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
And, uh, Mr. Wertzbocker?
Um, since our last, uh, council meeting, I, uh, went to Bay City and I attended the Elected Officials Academy, and it was very enlightening, um, both days that I was in, uh, session and work groups and classroom-type environment, I feel was the best hours that... was the best hours that I, I've learned in the past five years for anything. The instructors were, they were dynamite, very, you know, all very patient with our questions and everything and believe me, I had a ton of. I would also like to mention that in the past couple of weeks, I've gotten to spend some time with Matt Baker and Aaron Filipski, both department heads, Matt being the head of the building department and Aaron with the DPS. Both of them spent some good, what I call quality time with me, answering my questions and really filling me in on what they do and on a day-to-day basis and gave me examples and showed me, you know, what they're working on and what they've completed. And I, I just walked away feeling good. I mean, you know, we have some dynamite people in this community and a lot of pegs in the right spot. I'm big on acknowledging people that volunteer in the community. To me, without the volunteers in the community, it's kind of hard to believe where we would be without them. And I, I like to acknowledge like an unsung hero. That same weekend that I had been in Bay City for that academy, I came home and I was driving by Champagne Park and this is a couple hours before the parade. And here's Kathy Collier. She's the chairperson of the Beautification Commission. She's out and she's picking up garbage, Champagne Park, I mean, just getting the last minute details. Those are the kind of people, they go the extra mile. They need to be acknowledged. Lot of times it's very, very thankless efforts. Beautification Commission, they receive more negative comments sometimes than they do positive. That's great that you cleaned up that part of the community, what about the rest of the community? So, things like that. We need to take care of the volunteers. And speaking of volunteers, the Allen Park Citizen Civic Fund, June 19th, mark your calendars, Thursday evening from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Ice Arena, will be holding tap 25, Taste of Allen Park. Not only are, many of our fine pizzerias, including Primos, will be participating in this tasting event, but a couple of our Mexican restaurants and the Pink Garlic will be there. Great opportunity to come out and, and try the food from the restaurants that are in Allen Park. And of course they'll be tasting for adult beverages, beer and craft wines. And while we're on that, the, that event could use some volunteers. With the event running from 6:00 to 9:00, we typically have two shifts, one from 6:00 to 7:30, then 7:30 to 9:00. They're all simple and it's nothing but, nothing but a lot of fun. I see a lot of residents that volunteer and they come across old neighbors, old classmates, and there's like 500 mini reunions going on all that night long. So come on out. And with that, I yield.
Thank you.
Ms. Nick? I just want to, sorry, I've got a really bad sore throat, but I just wanted to thank everybody who helped make the Memorial Day event a positive one. We've received so many positive feedbacks. We've received organizations that want to be involved for next year, donations more are coming in to keep this parade going. So there are so many people to thank. Everybody came together. All our departments were wonderful and helping out, so I appreciate that. Everybody who participated, who volunteered, so I just want to say thank you to everybody out there. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius?
Keep it short. I just want to thank both Sandy and Brandy at the library, kind of unsung heroes in a lot of ways. They're making do with what they can do for the library. It's a tough go, serving on municipal facilities and, you know, with the budget and everything else. It's just great to see their hard work and effort and being recognized because I don't think they get enough recognition for being as creative and prudent with finances to do what you guys are doing at the library. So I thank you for that. I also just want to give thanks to everyone who came up and spoke during both the public comments and public hearing. And Monica Bailey, I really enjoy listening to you. Your educated and informational comments related to the development, the planning commission, the data, and I'm totally with you, on board in regards to transparency. And I just thank you for taking the time and effort to come up and talk repeatedly. Again, I thank you for that. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
With everything that's been said, I concur, with everything that we already discussed, hopefully with the parade, I want to see it continue. No seven-year absence. Also, I went to the Wyandotte Post for the American Legion 217, that's the post on the river, for their ceremony yesterday for the Memorial Day. It was great to see, what was it, about 10 or 12 people from Allen Park there. That is my post, so it was, it was a great honor to be there. Also, Chief talked about, or somebody talked about, running of the traffic lights and the stop signs this morning, three times. Twice here on Allen Road in Southfield and once over at Hanford in Allen. The light was definitely red for the other car that was crossing. Also, there's a new credit card scam going around. What they try and do is put money into your credit card. So it's a, I don't want to get this wrong, a credit to your credit card of a small amount, 10, 15, 20 dollars. If you see it, question it, call your credit card company, because what happens in turn, they know that that account is active and, you know, that way you don't have any extra charges on your credit card. The reason why I say that, it just happened to me with one of my Discover cards and thankfully I caught it within 45 minutes. So, other than that, I yield. Have a good week.
Thank you. And Mr. Lloyd?
So start off, just a thank you and congratulations to Nancy and Chief Egan and all the people that were involved. It was really a, a great event and I know that a lot of work went into it and I think Ms. Kittle was involved with it as well. Just, it was really cool to see the community come together and just an opportunity for everybody to showcase it, so thank you so much. I just think it's, I have to comment on this, I think it's hilarious that the mayor thinks that methods of paying for her taxes are near and dear to her heart. I think that that definitely speaks to the type of person that the mayor is and, and, and I'm glad that she's in that position for it. I just want to do, address a couple of the issues that were brought up in public comments, specifically the confusion and the clarity of our residents. I think it's important and I, and I am appreciative of Ms. Bailey Mcgaly coming up and bringing those issues up and Monica Bailey as well. So first off, with the tenure plan, just so everybody knows, that is a process that the state legislator has put into the planning commissions. So the planning commission is the body, like, within the city that is not only responsible for deciding what, what uses and places that we have, but also looking at, like, going forward as to what's the overall direction of the city. And when we're considering things like new developments, which we've all talked about tonight, that is the, the document that's referenced. They, the planning commission is actively working on a new tenure plan. That's what that, the survey that went out was pertaining to. And it does involve a number of things, multifamily housing, zoning districts, all of those things involved with it. But just so everybody knows, we, we still, even, even though we're working on a new tenure plan, we, we still actively reference our, our old tenure plan. So if you do come to the planning commission, which I would encourage you to do next, next Thursday, that is what you will be heard, spoken about a great deal, is what the planning commission will be considering is, is if the development in question matches with our current tenure plan as to what we have going forward. So that's important for people to know. As far as the theater property, which we're, we're spitballing better names, Allen Park Commons came up, Theater Park came up, so taking suggestions. The Municipal Facilities Committee, okay, is actively working on and talking about plans for that. It is the, it is the desire and the intention of the city to maintain that property as a public gathering spa- space for the city. I think that it is recently, just, just this year, the DDA moved the farmer's market to that space and it seems like it's been wildly successful. Seems like it's, the farmer's market has been growing over the last couple of years, but with the new space, has a little bit more room to grow. And I think that also, in talking to our DDA director, Mr. Hughes, the businesses around there have also seen an uptick of, of traffic with that. So that has been a huge success and I think that, that the plan is, is that we're going to capitalize on that success and continue to have events there and trying to make that a place that is going to be more and more inviting for citizens to come and visit. Some of the, the, at the last municipal complexes meeting, we discussed bringing in an architect who will actually put in some designs. We have some early ideas. It's not necessarily what, what, what everyone might remember from, you know, a couple of years ago now, but looking at putting some sort of structure that can be used for public gatherings there, maybe putting in, obviously, the DDA has already committed funds to putting in a mural in that location, putting in a wrought iron gate to make it look a lot more intentional. So I think that, I understand, you know, and Ms. Kittle brought up the debt, I do understand that, that concern, but I think that, just like your house, you have to continue to invest in your city if you want it to be a place that people want to live and that's going to continue to bring in revenue, bring up property values, all those things that go into it. So it is, it is absolutely our intention to invest in that, in that property because it is just positioned at this amazing location at the, like, the crossroads of Allen and Park, as Mr. Bailey brought up. And I'm referencing the whole Bailey family as I'm going through here, but they all made great points. So that is, that is a, a really key spot, I think, for the businesses and as well as for the residents that, that live in that area. So that is, that is the goal of that property. I know it seems like it's been, been slow going, but it is, you will be seeing improvements. You've already, we've already put in the picnic tables, we're going to be putting in trash cans, permanent like trash cans that are going to be coming in there. And, and hopefully, over the course of the next, next summer, you're going to see some more improvements going in there and it's just going to be kind of a continuous investment as we are continuing to put time and energy into that property and money. The last one I'm going to say, and just again, just for clarification purposes, again, I know that this is broadcast and I want everyone to know what the process is. So there's essentially, and I, we, we had a, if you weren't here for our, our, our work session, there was a discussion of ripeness and I don't want to, I don't want to get past that, so you can, I don't know, just wiggle your ear if I get too ripe, okay? All right, or not ripe enough. So there's, there's essentially two bodies that are considering issues with the Sheetz Gas Station that are gonna, that need to happen before this body comes into it. The Planning Commission, which I already mentioned, is meeting next Thursday, and they are going to essentially be looking at, does what is being suggested there more or less match with what our goals are for the tenure plan? They've already had one meeting. There was a, a motion to postpone any determination on that as we got more data regarding traffic and also the impact of a drive-through. And that is that meeting. The ZBA, which has been brought up, the Zoning Board of Appeals, their job is to basically look at when, when homeowners or businesses come in conflict with what is on the books for ordinances, that is put in there so that there's relief for those individuals that have those issues. And it's an incredibly common thing. Homeowners have to go through it all the time. The issue that we brought up is fencing, okay? So somebody might want to build a fence up to the side of their house so that it can let their dog out. It goes against the, the ordinances. So they have a, a method of going to the ZBA in order to overturn that and be able to get relief from that, on that issue. So the, the issues that, and I, they've, I think that all of them were brought up by public comments today. There's, I think that there's essentially three of them that are going against our ordinances. All three of those are being considered, considered by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Off the top of my head, I don't know when their regularly scheduled meeting is, but I will tell you, if you go to the city website and you go under events, you'll have the, the calendar for the upcoming month and it'll, it'll, for each day, I'll give you the dropdown of all the, all the events that are going on in those particulars days, it'll be posted. So after all of that, that's when this body, the, the city council gets brought in to decision-making. So if, if it seems like, if it seems like we're tearing or, or not addressing the issue, I, I just want you to know that it's not intentional. It's just that these other bodies are deliberating on it first and we don't want to get, to use Joe's phrase, don't want to put the cart in front of the horse. Want to let them have their chance to deliberate and make decisions and then, once they have, then it'll come to this body, most likely for a final decision. Okay, lastly, and, and I, this is just, I'm pretty sure this is complete serendipity. We, the mayor very kindly and appropriately passed the proclamation for Pride Month in the month of June, and I think it's something that is incredibly important for this community, that we acknowledge that as a city, we are proud of all of our residents and it's especially important for our young people that might be, feel like they're going through something in isolation, they might feel ashamed, and it's really important that we publicly affirm that. And it just so happens that back in 2021, the students that led the initiative to acknowledge Pride Month by the City of Allen Park, two of them happened to be in attendance tonight and that's Ms. Natalie Nirona and Billy Katerior, who came here back in, I believe, 2021 and spoke behind, in front of this body to acknowledge the very first Pride Month five, four years ago. And ever since then, it has become a tradition that we acknowledge it. And I, I think it's a testament that, you know, getting involved in your city and making a difference. And, you know, both Natalie and Billy are former students of mine and I am incredibly proud of everything that they have, of this and everything that they've done since then. So I think it would be appropriate to give them a little round of applause, so thank, thank you guys. And Mike, sorry, sorry for laughing loudly into the mic too. I apologize. I apologize for that. And I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Schlack?
Tough act to follow. I'll make it quick. Try not to beat too much of a dead horse, but I want to say thank you to Mayor Pro-Nick to organizing the Memorial Day Parade and all the organizations and commissions and every city department that participated. Fantastic event to really show our respect to those that made the ultimate sacrifice. So I do hope that continues every year. I definitely want to see it every year. I also want to thank all our graduates that are, have graduated or will be graduating. Definitely, I hope all your hopes and dreams are fulfilled and go forward and be safe this summer and hence forward. I also want to do a quick shout out to the Quirness Club of Allen Park. They're having their annual event on the 31st, which is this Sunday, at Duda Park, Barney Park. The park, I think they're going to have hot dogs, there's going to be chips, there's going to be seven or eight different crafts that children can participate, so if you're not doing anything Sunday, definitely come out to that. It's going to be a fantastic event. But other than that, I will yield. I think Dan said a great deal, that everyone did, and if Dan didn't cover, I think the rest of my colleagues did. Of course, if something missed, I'm sure the mayor will play the final catch-up, so with that, I yield. Thank you.
Through the chair, real quick.
Yes.
The Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is on the city calendar, scheduled for June 12th. from seven to eight P.M.
Thank you. And just one correction, it's Saturday, the 31st, so don't be going there on Sunday. It'll be a day, it's going to be a day late. That's all right. I've gone through the same thing. I can't keep track of the week. Um, I'm going to be really brief. I, again, I want to thank, primarily, uh, Mayor Protnik for the, uh, Memorial Day Parade. I think, um, I believe I know who was the driving force behind that. It was very well organized and very much appreciated and we got lucky with the weather. So I heard a lot of nice comments about it from people who were in attendance. I think having that venue that we have now, uh, speaks very well to it. And, um, as has been stated here, we certainly hope it continues now that we don't have to deal with things like COVID, right? So, um, want to thank everybody who, uh, attended and came up and, and, uh, made comments. I took a lot of notes because there were some very interesting statements that were made. And, um, you know, you do get listened to and, again, I think sometimes people have a tendency to forget when we start talking about taxes or things that happen in the city, is that, we're no different than anybody else here. Uh, you just happen to put us in a position where we've got a lot of responsibilities and a lot of, uh, uh, things that we have to deal with. Um, but we're all taxpayers and we all live here and, and we all are experiencing the same things as you do. So, um, I hope that two of my council people are feeling, uh, better because obviously this weather and the high pollen counts that are daily are getting to everyone and all I'm having to do is clear my throat periodically. But, um, certainly hope that everyone improves, enjoy the weather and I hope it lingers. I will probably forget something important that I wanted to say, but I'll write it down and get you next time. So at this point, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Schlack and Mr. Wurtzbacker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. We are adjourned at 7:32.